Call this meeting to order, Warrenville City Council, November 3rd. This meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format here at City Hall. So for your convenience, public may view it at the YouTube channel, and public comment is only available in person during the meeting. Remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. So let's call to order, call to roll, please.
Alderman Ashart?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovid?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davlos?
Here.
Alderman Kuckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
And Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
If you'd rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a couple of presentations as part of the opening ceremonies here. First is the IDEC presentation of Warrenville Smiles. And Juan Ortiz, I believe, is going to start things off, and Megan Legler is going to help out, too.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Juan. I'm the HR Generalist for the city of Warrenville, as well as the Staff Liaison for the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission. So IDEC's been working on a pretty cool initiative to accomplish our strategic goal of increasing participation in boards and commission, and increasing participation in boards and commission by residents of different cultures and backgrounds. To speak more about it, we've invited the IDEC Chair, Megan Legler, to give you a little bit of info on the bag and the overall initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Megan, thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Megan Legler, and I have the honor of serving as the Chair of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission for the city of Warrenville. So before my family moved to Warrenville about 10 years ago, we spent months searching for the right place to plant our roots. And one afternoon, we stopped by the playground outside the Park District, just so my son could get out of the car and kind of take a break. And there was a woman there with her grandchild. And the moment we walked up, she absolutely lit up. She smiled, she waved, she said hello, like we'd always been neighbors. I was born and raised in Chicago. This was really weird. But it was actually really nice and surprising as well. We talked for only a few minutes, long enough for her to tell my son and I about the Fourth of July Parade, to point out her house along the route, and to invite us, complete strangers, to sit in her yard that July. It was really simple. It was really kind. And in that moment, I knew that this is what home should feel like, and this is where I wanted to raise my kids. That brief exchange has stayed with me ever since, because belonging doesn't begin with big programs or banners. It begins with a moment of recognition, or a smile, or a wave, or a welcome. So at Multicultural Fest this past summer, our commission wanted to better understand what helps everyone in Warrenville feel that same sense of belonging. So we posed a question to our residents. What is the key to feeling welcome in your neighborhood? And I actually have the door here that we use with some of the keys. And we handed out these paper keys, and we invited everyone to write their answers and to hang them on our door. And when we stepped back, and we saw that there was a common theme that was echoed again and again on these keys, we saw words like "smile" or "wave," "hello." And we realized that those tiny gestures carried a big truth, that connection and inclusion grow from small, intentional acts of kindness. From that discovery, we worked on a way for IDEC to use that information to connect with the community. And we initiated Smile, Wave, Repeat: The Warrenville Way, or as it will also be promoted, Warrenville Smiles. The mission of the campaign is simple. We want to engage the community, bring awareness to IDEC, and promote a community-wide culture of inclusivity and kindness. A community where residents and visitors alike can feel acknowledged and connected through intentional smiles and waves. You'll soon start to see marketing stickers, a smile spotlight station around town, highlighting the initiative in action, sharing what it is that kindness and inclusion can do, how it spreads, and how a simple gesture can strengthen our community. But this initiative is also about celebrating who we already are, a community known for its friendliness, for its warmth, its small-town heart. Warrenville Smiles gives us a way to recognize it, strengthen it, and invite others to join in. So tonight, with the bags that are placed in front of you, inviting you each to accept the challenge, to smile, to wave, to repeat, and by doing so, to help promote kindness and inclusion that will ripple through our neighborhoods and strengthen our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank the IDEC Commission. Thanks, Juan, yourself. And I think we can all try it right now, right? Everybody smile, wave, and repeat to anybody who may be watching. Thank you very much for that initiative. What's really exciting is that's not something the City Council said people should do. That's something that came from the residents through the IDEC Commission. So congratulations. Thanks very much for that. We look forward to more of your marketing information and ways of getting the word out, and the hashtag, and the stickers, and everything else. So let's try that one more time. Everybody smile, wave, and repeat. Very good. It's easy enough to do. Thank you very much. Small gestures make big impacts. Next is a presentation of the Fiscal Year 2025 Audit Report by Lauterbach and Hamin. And Director Dollstrand wants to kick this off, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to introduce Brad Porter to present our 2025 Audit Report, as he does every year. And I will leave it up to him.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Brad Porter. Unfortunately, I don't come bearing any amazing props, but I do have 137-page audit documents. So I think that's, you know, it's worth something. But I'm excited to be here tonight. Great to see a lot of familiar faces. And Mayor, welcome to the team. I say that because it is really a team effort in getting this audit to the finish line. So it takes a lot of resources, time, and energy of the various parties to get to this point tonight. So I'd like to start with a very generous thank you to Finance Director Dollstrand and his amazing team for all of their contributions. When we walk in on day one, I can confidently say that we're going to have everything that we need to complete our audit procedures, which is all that we can ask for from an audit standpoint. And not only that, but a lot of people view an audit as kind of a year-end thing. But there are so many proactive conversations that are happening at multiple points throughout the year to make sure that the audit itself is a workhorse machine. So I'd just like to give kudos to Kevin and his team for an excellent job well done for fiscal year 2025. Now, there are three pieces of required communication that we issue at the conclusion of each audit process. And I'm going to briefly talk through. I promise I won't go through all 137 pages here tonight, but I'll do my best to summarize some of the key points from our audit cycle, beginning with a three-page letter that we issue in accordance with what we call our SAS 114 Letter. In accordance with Statement on Auditing Standard Number 114, we are required to state whether or not we had any disagreements or difficulties that we had encountered in our audit process. And I'm happy to report tonight that, in the body of that letter, you will find no such disagreements or difficulties noted. Now, my understanding is that everybody has been distributed a copy of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Is that correct? No?
Electronic.
Oh, electronic, okay. Very good. Well, I'll reference certain page numbers, so feel free to follow along. I know I see a lot of.
Why is it electronic this year? We've always gotten copies in the past.
I do have hard copies available. If you'd like, when I have them here, they were sent out electronically this year.
Would you like a paper copy? Awesome, sounds good. Anybody else? Sounds good. All right. All right, very good. So we will kick things off with page eight. I always like to start with some good news. On page eight, you'll find your Certificate of Achievement Award that was issued by the Government Finance Officers Association. This award represents the highest form of financial reporting excellence that any member of local government can receive. So congratulations to the city for receiving that award once again for fiscal year 2024. They are always reported one year in a year. So we'll take this fiscal year 2025 report and kind of team effort with Kevin and his team, submit for the application for fiscal year 2025 as well, not anticipating any hiccups in receiving that award once again. Just for a little bit of background on that program, there is a very lengthy list of compliance requirements that must be met. There are additional sections included within your audit report that are directly from that program itself. And it is a significant, you know, kind of time burden on the team to make sure that all those compliance requirements are met. So I just wanted to, again, compliment the finance team for receiving that award once again. Now, please turn with me to page 11. Pages 11 through 13 are what we call our Independent Auditor's Report. Our job as auditors is to ensure that we are taking the financial statements that are provided to us by the finance team and generating an opinion on the financial statements. I am happy to report that for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2025, we have issued the city what is known as an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest form of opinion that any entity can receive in the government space, ultimately stating that we, as your auditors, believe the financial statements to be presented fairly in all material aspects. We do a number of internal control walkthroughs of the city's processes, such as receipting, disbursement, payroll, et cetera. And we had no internal control weaknesses or recommendations that we had identified. And that is exemplified in the management letter that you have received here tonight as well. All right, page 15, please. Pages 15 through 25 are what we call our Management's Discussion and Analysis. I know there is so much information in here, all of which is very useful, but it's sometimes a little bit hard to digest the financial statements. So what I would do is I would encourage members of council to spend most of your time and energy on this set of 11 pages or so. And you're going to walk away with a great narrative overview of fiscal year 2025. It's going to contain a lot of great comparative information with fiscal year 2024. And again, you're going to just walk away with a much better understanding if you spend most of your time and energy on what we call our MDNA section. All right, if you could turn with me to page 36. I know council's receiving monthly financial updates. So some of the financial information in here, just due to the timing of the audit issuance, is a little outdated. So I won't spend too much time on the actual numbers, but I do think there are a couple of quick facts that are important for you as council. So towards the bottom there, you'll find, this is our general fund income statement for the year. There's a line item called our net change in fund balance. That is essentially our revenues over expenditures for the fiscal year. I'm happy to report for fiscal year 2025, the general fund reported an increase in our fund balance of $1.63 million, or 12% over the previous fiscal year. For a little bit of background on that, the general fund has just under six months of monthly operating expenditures and unassigned reserves, which is a very healthy figure. Now, there wasn't much in terms of footnote updates this year. So I do want to just point out our schedule of changes in the city's police pension fund liability under GASB 6768. I know that's a hot topic year over year. So I'd like if everybody could turn with me to pages 88 and 89. Now, just a reminder, the city engages, I guess the police pension fund engages a third-party actuary provider to complete this unfunded liability calculation that says, what is our total pension obligation for all active and retired members? And what are the assets that we have now versus what those assets will be worth, you know, in 2050? So the far-right-hand column is our fiscal year 2025 on page 89. The actuaries calculated a total future pension liability of $43.4 million. Offsetting this future liability was total plan assets of $32 million, for a net pension liability of $11.4 million. In terms of where we're at with percent funded, we were at 70.48 last year. And we were at 73.7. So we had another great year of investment returns for fiscal year 2025. So, you know, this isn't going to make a big jump overnight, but if we see that kind of trending in the right direction, that's all that you can ask for in your position as a member of council. So that concludes my coverage of the audit. I'm happy to field any questions. We did issue a third piece of required communication. That is what we call our management letter. And as I had alluded to, we had no current recommendations for fiscal year 2025. There were a handful of prior recommendations that management has provided a response to contained within the body of that letter.
Any questions from council for our auditor? Alderman Davlos?
Your figure of 73.7% funded on that pension, is that, I don't know how to ask this, is that for our size community and financial, is that a typical number that municipalities sort of have? Or is it all across the board?
It's across the board, and it all depends on the census data of your actual pension plan. So some plans will have a very young age versus an older planning. So there are a lot of factors that can go into it. But what I will say is I think that the pension fund is in a pretty good position.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Alderman Widener?
With the pension fund, do you see any that are fully funded in any municipalities?
I can honestly say, in my 11 years of doing this, I have not seen municipality at fully funded. So I think the goal of GASB 6768 is actually to get to 90% funded by a future year. So if that tells you anything about kind of what the ultimate end goal is, it's, you know, to be in a sound position.
And it looks like we're on track for that as we're moving forward.
Yep, and what you'll see is the actuaries will increase your contribution if they feel like you're falling a little bit off track. They'll decrease it if you're, you know, cruising along. So it'll really just kind of be a constant situation that you're monitoring year over year.
Okay. And there's no possibility of any other funding source for the remaining 27%? It's solely up to the municipality?
Essentially, yep. Obviously, you have a police pension fund levy. Those dollars are going right over to the pension fund. The city always has the opportunity to make additional contributions in excess of what the actuaries are determining as your contribution figure. I don't see very many municipalities doing that, but it's always certainly an option.
And as we move to the next fiscal year, do you see any opportunities for improvement or best practices that the city should concentrate on?
Honestly, I've been doing this audit for, I think, going on 10 years now with the city. And I feel like every year, we have one of those really great conversations that with this team in place, the, you know, three days later, it's implemented. It's not a situation where it's the next audit cycle. It's making sure that if there's any of those best practices that do come to light, that they're being addressed right then and there. So not at this time.
Well, thank you. And thank you to the financial department team for keeping us on track and in a good spot as far as our financial reporting goes in Warrenville. It's great to be in, I guess, a comfortable position financially. Thank you.
And there are a plethora of budgetary schedules throughout the report, too. If you're interested in how a certain fund or certain department performed in relation to budget, there's many schedules contained within this document, so.
Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, just a few things. So for the general fund, we have just under six months, you said, in reserves. Is that pretty typical? Is that above average? What would you say that is?
Hard to compare apples and oranges, but I will say it's probably slightly above what I typically see in my world.
Okay, great. And then the award that we received this year, that's the highest award?
Yes. Yeah, there's no higher award.
Kevin, how many years? 100?
No.
150? I'm not sure.
I'm wearing the 35, 36, something like that.
All right, so we should celebrate 40, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
And then, going back to the police pension, I don't know if you sense that's what everybody is really worried about. But so if we were, we have to be 90% funded by 2040, I believe. So if we're tracking at 3% over the next 15 years, that would get us to like 100. And I know it's going to change, right? It's going to, officers come, go, this, that, whatnot. But at least at 3%, 3.5%, as long as we maintain that.
Yeah, so there's actually a schedule within your audit, and I can give you the specific page number that shows what the, oh, it's page 84, what the city has contributed to the police pension fund in relation to what the actuaries have recommended. And you will see that there was one year that there was a deficiency, but every, I guess, two technically, one's a thousand bucks. But every other year, you've had, you've contributed 313,000 over, 224,000 over, 38,000 over. So if you continue to do that, I'm, you know, nothing's stopping you, so.
Okay, and then can you help us talk to Springfield about extending that date? Is that included in this or no?
I do believe there was talks of extending it to 2050. I can't recall off the top of my head if it got officially approved, but there is discussions about that, so.
Okay, great.
Which then it's like, it's just a rolling number at that point.
Kick in the can, yep.
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Treasure.
At the Police Pension Board last week, there was a presentation about many of the same things there. And there was a set of assumptions from Lauterbach, and then there was a set of assumptions from the state that I think they called an alternate set of assumptions. There were very different answers there. So it really wasn't clear what the different assumptions were.
Yeah, and I am no actuary by any means, but I know enough to be dangerous, right? That's the goal. So yes, there's an alternate contribution that's always going to come in relatively, substantially less than what the actuaries are recommending. And that is based on, like you said, an entirely different set of assumptions. So what you're seeing in this audit report is what our actuaries actually suggest, not the alternate contribution. So when I say the city is contributing more than the actuarially determined contribution, that's based on what the actuaries are calculating and not the alternate contribution.
But I was told the alternate contributions are, I'm sorry, the alternate assumptions are made by the state.
Correct. Yep, they're disclosed in the actuary report as well, though. So they say, here's what the state is recommending, here's what the actuaries are recommending under a GASB 6768 approach.
Is there any way to get a feeling for what those different assumptions are?
Um, probably speaking with our actuaries. I'm happy to get our team on a phone call with anybody who's interested.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I was going to say, I could leave a card with Kevin, too, if you'd like to reach out to me directly. Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much. If there are no other questions, Director Dollstrand, anything else?
No, thank you, thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thanks to you and your staff for all your work with the auditors as well. Thank you very much for being here this evening and for the report. All right. Next item on our agenda are citizen comments. We have one person signed in to speak, Bob Seibert. Come on up.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. In this month's hometown happenings, on page two, they state that the new 91-unit townhomes will create $115,000 increase in property taxes to the city. If you divide the 115,000 by the 91 units, you receive $1,263 per unit. If we divide the 1,263 by the city's tax rates, we obtain the EAV that is necessary to receive that $1,263. That figure is $191,824. When we put that in a sales price, that means in order to receive the $115,000 in increased property tax revenue, the average sales price of each unit would have to be $575,472. The school district, it states 300,000. That would be $3,296. This is an error that will see by 100%. The park district, the fire district, and the library district are consistent with the standards of the property tax relationships. Park district, $62,681 per unit, EAV of $147,000. Fire district, $87,956, $145,000 in EAV. Library district, $51,560, $145,000 in EAV. The key is that you can only have one EAV per house, only one. We can see there's a variety that we're looking at. So when we look at the $145,000, which is the average on the three taxing districts, we then have, in order to obtain that revenue, we have a sales price of $437,460 per unit. When we apply that figure to the school district, that figure then becomes, with the $145,000, becomes $6,520 per unit, double what was stated, 100% in error. In the city of Warrenville, when we use the $437,000 figure, which is the kind of the centrist of the other three taxing districts, the 1,263 decreases to $919. That means that instead of 115,000, you will receive $83,600, or a decrease of $3,100 per year, a 27% decrease. The key interest here is the fact, and what I did is I have an actual tax bill with $140,000 EAV, which mirrors pretty much the figures that I've given you on the $437,000 figure, actual relationships with our taxing districts. So I think the key element here is the correct information should be sent to the citizens. We shouldn't be sending out information that is vague, information that is not based on figures that were accomplished. There, the developers' estimates. And anyone who's taken a class in logic knows that when you refer, the C in logic is of reference to authority. Here, we're looking at developer, no EAV, no relationship as to how the figures were devised.
Thank you, Bob. And point of clarification, those were the developers' estimated annual tax revenues. So those are not city numbers. Those were the developers' estimated numbers, just to be clear. Back to the agenda, officials and staff comments. So I have two comments. One was, and many of you are aware and saw the information about the community food pantry that the city website pushed out on social media. And there was one brief error, or small error, that they are accepting donations on Mondays and Thursdays from 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. at the food pantry near Emmanuel Presbyterian. So it is open on Sundays from 1:00 to 3:00, Tuesdays from 11:00 to 1:00. And they could use corn, canned fruit, rice, canned tuna, macaroni and cheese. Please take a look at what's on the city website and pass it on to friends and neighbors and ask them to help as they are able, because these are trying times for food pantries. Another one, a little bit more fun that I have, is I actually heard back, well, I'll step back. When I ran for mayor, I said I wanted to try to reinitiate our sister-city agreement with Yall, Ireland. So I reached out, and I reached out, and I tried to find somebody, I tried to find somebody. Finally received a word back from the county. Finally received a word back from the county administrators in Yall, Ireland, which is our sister city since 1985, shortly at the very end of Rich Volkmer's term and the beginning of Vivian Lund's first term. And I've got some initial contacts going back and forth. So hopefully we'll reinvigorate that a little bit, maybe get the schools involved and have that outreach with our sister city in Yall, Ireland, which is on the south coast near Cork. If you want to do a little geography lesson, take a look at that. And maybe we can arrange a field trip someday else, that would be fun. So that's all I have. A clerk, anything? Treasure?
I didn't have anything, but I have to mention that when I visited Yall soon after the sister city arrangement was put together, I happened to be there on the night of a city council meeting. And I got to sit there, and they had the same kinds of comments from the citizens and stuff that we had there. But then afterwards, everybody retired into a chamber and drank some whiskey.
Now, that's not a bad idea. Talk about that. I think that might be, Brooke, don't listen to it. Attorney didn't hear that. Thank you, Treasure. Any aldermen? Alderman Wyder?
I've never been to Yall, but this afternoon I had the opportunity to go to Emmanuel Presbyterian Food Pantry, and I dropped off a few items. There was a steady flow of people, but there was no waiting. It was easy to drop off things. And it is, like you said, Mayor, a time of need. So I encourage everybody to participate with that endeavor of dropping off a few cans of much-needed food for the food pantry. Besides the Smile Wave Repeat Campaign, the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Awareness Commission honors federally recognized heritage and history months as part of the city's commitment to build an inclusive community that values diversity. And this month, November, is National Native American Month, American Indian Month, and Alaskan Native Heritage Month. So in Warrenville, we welcome everyone, and everyone is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other alderman? Alderman Berry?
Good evening. I would just like to thank Director Emery and all of the community development staff and anyone who was involved in the Warrenville mercantile pop-up stores. It was a big success, both this last weekend, when they had the grand opening and the ribbon cutting, and also the weekend before. So I liked being there. It was nice seeing a lot of different residents coming out, walking around, enjoying the weather. And then the Warren Tavern was open, and the Warren Tavern Guild was, had their craft fair for the year. They were selling all different items for Christmas. It was just, it was just a fun and wonderful weekend. It was great seeing people walking across the bridge and just enjoying the day in Warrenville. So thank you for all your hard work in doing this. I know that we're not going to have this open again until sometime in the spring, but we're going to have something at holidays, I think, which we will have here. And then also, I think you said in the library, is that correct? So look for more information about that. So thanks again for all your hard work. It was just wonderful. Thank you.
Agreed. Other alderman? Very well, then we'll move on to administrator.
I just wanted to also extend my congratulations to the finance department for all their hard work with the audit and looking forward to another wonderful year of awards from the financial recognition that we get. And also to add to what Alderman Berry said, thanks to Public Works for their assistance and guidance with community development to get the sheds in place and the landscaping looking fantastic. For those of us that were out there, the grass couldn't have looked better. The trees were preserved, and we worked around the landscape to make sure that we could have the market without disturbing all of the hard work that folks have put in for years to make the landscape at Leon Schmidt Park look great. So well done to everyone, thank you.
Yep, who goes all around? Anything else? Attorney? Okay, thank you. Next would be the approval of the agenda for this council's regular meeting. Alderman Wyder?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the November 3rd, 2025 city council regular meeting.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Wyder, second by Alderman Kruckenberg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next would be the number of minutes to be approved. Alderman Wyder?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the October 20th, 2025 city council regular meeting and to approve the minutes of the October 20th, 2025 closed session meetings, 1 and 2.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded by Alderman Davalos. I heard something. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So the minutes are approved. Next we have the consent agenda. Read these items and then entertain a motion. Item A is accept the plan commission recommendation, waive the second reading and pass ordinance O2025-54, amending the Warrenville zoning ordinance regarding residential district requirements for Summer Lakes, Fox Hollow, and River Oaks Plan Unit Developments. Item B, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2025-64, approving a reduction of bonds for 93 octane brewery production facility. Item C, accept Tourism and Arts Commission recommendation and pass resolution R2025-65, approving an agreement with artists for the creation, installation, and purchase of an outdoor mosaic mural in the amount of $60,000. Item D, accept Mayor Johnson's recommendation and appoint Lindsey Reinhardt to the bicyclist and pedestrian advisory commission for a term expiring April 30, 2026. Item E, receive and file minutes of the bicyclist and pedestrian advisory commission meeting held on September 9, 2025. Item F, receive and file minutes of the environmental advisory commission meeting held on September 16, 2025. Item G, receive and file minutes of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Awareness Commission meeting held on September 16, 2025. Item H, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on October 23, 2025. Item I is receive and file the FY 2025 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Item J, receive and file a report of invoices paid up to October 29, 2025 in the amount of $65,201.62. Item K, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before November 17, 2025 in the amount of $1,082,807.86. And last is receive and file the wire transfer report for October of 2025. Is there a motion? Alderman Wyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented by Mayor Andrew Johnson.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Wyder, second by Alderman Kruckenberg. Any discussion, questions, conversation? We call the roll, please.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Wydner?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
And Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. No items on the regular agenda, unfinished business, new business. We do have a need for a closed session, so Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120/2, currency, friends 2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Second?
Moved by Alderman Berry, second by Alderman Wilkie. We call the roll, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Wydner?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We're adjourned to closed session. Thank you very much, everybody.